All right, it is 6:02. We are going to call this meeting to order. So the first thing we're going to do is we'll call in and I'm going to start to record again as a backup.
Recording in progress.
All right, so Megan.
Megan Harvey here.
And Lori.
Lori Garcia here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
And Cindy Kuzensky here. Yes, oh, there's the mayor, yay, we'll let the mayor roll call in. We'll wait a second for connections. Welcome, Mayor, we are, we're calling in, so if you, you would be the last person, except for Shannon, but I'm not sure if she's going to be able to make it. So can you unmute yourself? Thank you.
Mayor LaChapelle here.
Okay, welcome everybody to our January 10th School Committee meeting. So if I keep looking away, I'm not ignoring people. I usually print up my agenda, I hate not facing, but I'm not not paying attention, I'm looking at the agenda on another computer, so my apologies. So do we have any correspondence?
We do have a little bit of correspondence. So I received, let's see, I'm trying to look, I received an email from Joe Peter, who checked in about East Hampton Public Schools masking recommendations or guidelines and wondering about surrounding districts. And then you got a follow-up from Joe, sort of indicating what some other districts nearby are doing. So Springfield and North Hampton have masking recommendations currently ongoing. I also received an email from Alexis Posea Abbott, and my apologies if I'm mispronouncing that, who also wrote asking about masking recommendations and guidance during this time of higher infection rates in the community. And then lastly, there was sort of a series of correspondence from, it was actually mid-December or so, received an email from Jenny Papa George, who served on the committee, the Event Planning Committee for the Open House, who saw the article in the Gazette back in December about the way the City Council had discussed approving the, I'm not sure all the wording is, but there was a Gazette article titled something like $18,000 party celebrating the new school ruffles feathers in East Hampton. And she wrote jointly to the School Committee and to the City Council, just expressing her dismay and disappointment about the way that this was portrayed and the way that, sort of quotes were, were, how was discussed gave the Gazette a lot of material to put in for those clickbaity quotes. And she followed up several times, and I thought I've had a really excellent point that I wanted to share, that she okayed, or she asked me to pass along to the group. Where she just mentioned that the sort of public scrutiny and the way it played out in the public sends a message to the East Hampton community that the school isn't using resources appropriately, which is very harmful and it's dangerous territory as it makes it harder in the future if the community needs to vote on additional resources for the schools. So that as a member of the Event Planning Committee, I thought that was an important email to share. We also received relatedly a response to the entire group from Councilor Riley, who continued a line of questioning about the Open House event and why costs were as they were, which was discussed publicly at the City Council meeting, I want to say last week, two weeks ago. Time is a funny thing in January, but it was discussed publicly at the City Council meeting. That's all I got.
All right, do we have gifts?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, I do not see Mackenzie here, let me peek.
Can I just read something that Mackenzie sent to us because she was not going to be here tonight? So I'm just reading, this is the update from Mackenzie. She said, "Student Council is currently working on forming committees to have more organized and better focused meetings. They have currently formed four committees, two which are meeting Wednesday afternoon and two that are meeting Thursday morning. The whole council is working on an event called Kids Night Out. More information to come. And in other news, the senior class is hosting the Snowball, which is this Saturday." That's all she sent. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to open up public comment. We're going to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes and please, if you want to indicate now that you'd like to talk, please do so and we will need you to say who you are. Right now, I'm not seeing anybody, so I'll give it a minute or two. Or a minute, if anybody wants to talk, let's see what time it is. I think it's well into the meeting, so we should be okay. Going once, going twice. I do not see anybody indicating that they would like to talk, so I am now going to close public speak. All right, thank you. So now we are on to superintendent updates.
Thank you. I do have a few updates this evening. I just wanted to let everyone know that kindergarten information night is going to be happening soon. We've been publicizing this and we've sent information out to all the K families that were on our census. But let me just put the date out there again. It's Thursday, January 26th, and it's from 5:00 to 6:30 at Mountain View School. Families can reach out to Jean Libby, our Family Engagement Coordinator, or to Mountain View School if they did not receive any information and if they have questions about the event. But we'll be talking all about what kindergarten will look like next year, just to give families that information. And we hope to have a successful event. So that's one in, in piece of information I wanted to share. And the next is, I just wanted to note a few folks that deserve some praise this evening. We've had our music teachers were instrumental, I put that in there, for providing some musical performances during the month of December. Charmulius at the high school for the winter concert and Cindy Cludier and Brandon Goulet at the middle school and elementary school. I also want to recognize Dave Beauregard at the high school for doing all the student council events on Activity Day. And Amy Paulus, who directed the winter school production of She Kills Monsters, that was our winter play. And now I'd like to introduce our speakers for this evening. We have a presentation tonight from the Arcadia School Programs, which is an ELF funded enrichment program. We have, I think Kim Hoff and Laura Beltran are both here. This is a funded program through ELF, as I mentioned, and they work, the Arcadia Program does work at Mountain View School. They include a middle school science program curriculum and professional learning opportunities for our pre-K through eight educators. So welcome to Kim and Laura, and I'm going to turn it over to them so they can talk about the wonderful programming they have for us.
Great, thank you so much. And thank you to everybody for inviting us. And also just a huge thank you to the East Hampton Learning Foundation for giving us the opportunity to provide this grant-funded enrichment project. It's been really exciting for us to do and to provide and to meet the students, work with the staff. We're just having an amazing school year so far. So Laura and I are going to take the next probably 10 or minutes, 10 minutes or so to introduce ourselves, to talk a little bit about the purpose of the enrichment project, to tell you the components, the ways that we're meeting the purpose, and then we'll talk more specifically about some of the class sessions that we're providing. We'll sort of switch off speaking and we'll have time at the end for questions. So there are three Arcadia educators who are working on this project. I'm one of them, again, I'm Kim Hoff, I'm one of the education coordinators, as well as a K-12 educator and assistant camp director at Arcadia. Laura Beltran, who's going to be speaking in just a couple of minutes, is one of our teacher naturalists. And then Brittany Guttermuth is our statewide climate change education program manager. She couldn't be here tonight, but we have an update from her as well. So the purpose of this grant-funded program through the East Hampton Learning Foundation is to work with teachers and students at the Mountain View School to encourage outdoor learning, to facilitate student-led projects, to enhance outdoor learning opportunities for the whole school, and to highlight the new space for the community. And we're doing that in several different ways. And the, the project is taking place really for the whole school year. It started in September with some professional development opportunities. And then in, from November to May, we're going to be in the classrooms and then we'll be having a culminating event that Laura will touch a little bit on. And with that, I will pass it over to Laura.
Great, thanks, Kim. And again, thank you all for letting us be here and thanks again to the East Hampton Learning Foundation. And so just to cover briefly what the ELF covers is that, the main part of it is to get into the science classes in the sixth and seventh grade. And so that's the first part, is that all six of the sixth grade classes, we're going to be teaching seven sessions throughout the school year. So we just taught our third one actually today and, and they'll continue for the next few months. We'll also be in the seventh grade, and in the seventh grade, there are five science classes and we'll be doing nine sessions with them. Six of those are learning sessions and three of those are sessions where we'll be mentoring them because they'll be coming up with a class project. Then the final thing with the seventh grade is this culminating event that Kim had referred to. And the second part of what ELF has supported are these teacher PDs or professional development workshops, which have been completed. One was in September, that was focused specifically to the middle school science teachers, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And then we had our second professional development workshop, which was in November, and that was for any teacher, it was open to any teacher of Mountain View School. And those workshops focused on bringing learning outdoors, what were some of the challenges that teachers felt they would face? And what are some opportunities for using the school, this new schoolyard? The third part of the grant, our third educator, Brittany, who couldn't be here, she's working with the PTO Sustainability Committee for coming up with ideas. And very last, the grant is supporting us in some of our supplies that we're using for teaching in the classrooms. And with that, I'll, I'll let Kim discuss a little bit more detail about the sixth grade sessions.
Sure. So in our sessions, Laura and I are co-teaching the bulk of the sessions for both the sixth and the seventh grade. Brittany is teaching the eighth grade sessions with the civics classes, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later as well. And one thing that the sixth and the seventh grades have in common is that a week before each session that we do, we send to the teachers sort of an outline of what we're going to be doing for the coming week, so they receive the topic that we're going to be doing, which we've collaborated, we have planning meetings with all of the teachers before we started. They also receive the concepts, the basic vocabulary, and an outline of the activities we'll be doing for each class. So they have an opportunity to let us know if there are any challenges or things that might not work for their class. And we also, for no matter the grade, make weather accommodations with things like sitting pads and making sure that students have the opportunity to, to have the proper attire for outdoors. We also make a point of if the weather's really bad, making sure we're staying in covered areas, but still have the opportunity to go outside in every single session. One other thing that's in shared in common with the sixth and the seventh grade is that our first lesson for all the classes was specifically on field journaling. So every student has a field journal and we did a whole class about the proper ways to collect scientific data and to field journal. We did field journaling exercises both in the classroom and outside and really got the students accustomed to how they would need to set up their journals every time we go outside to use them, to make observations or to collect data. So those are some things in common with the sixth and the seventh grade. For the sixth grade, we met with the teachers, with Donna Barkholm and Jess Reed ahead of time. And they, all the teachers have been just incredibly supportive, enthusiastic, welcoming, helpful. We've had just an amazing experience. We've had to schedule, I think it's 87 sessions throughout the school year, and I think this is the easiest scheduled thing we've ever had to do. It was amazing. But we go into the sixth grade once a month and we started in November, so we'll go in November through May with the sixth grade. And we're really focusing, all of the lessons that we're doing are Massachusetts standards based, which is also why we have planning meetings with the teachers ahead of time. So with the sixth grade, we're focusing on rocks, fossils, weathering, erosion, the rock cycle, and going out and exploring the schoolyard in relation to geology, into local fossil discovery in history, and allowing time for the students to both observe and experience rocks, fossils, geology from their schoolyard as well as from their classroom. We seek evidence, we look, ask questions, we use evidence to form conclusions, we use data collection to form hypotheses. We've been talking about things like rocks and fossils and having sorting activities. We've been finding objects in the schoolyard that are made of rock, but that are not rocks themselves. We have done a rock cycle game to explain the rock cycle to students and let them sort of be rocks throughout the entire rock cycle. And just today, we had a really fun lesson with Mrs. Barkholm's sixth grades and it'll be with Ms. Reed's on Friday on dinosaur tracks in the local dinosaur history fossils. We've been, we had two scale dinosaur tracks out in the schoolyard that the students had to measure the length and the width of the track, they had to measure the stride. They had to notice the pattern of the tracks, they had to sort of hypothesize what the dinosaur might have looked like, then they saw the real dinosaur. So we're really doing a lot of evidence-based fun activities, but that relate them to their schoolyard, to their local community, and to their standards. So we're having a really, really amazing time. Our next session, I believe, will be observing Mount Tom, talking about the, from the schoolyard, of course, talking about the formation of Mount Tom and how the local geology relates to our ability to find fossils in this local area. I think I'll stop there with sixth grade and have Laura jump into seventh.
So seventh grade, our focus has been on teaching the basics of climate change. And so we began beyond just the nature journaling and learning how to do field journaling and gathering evidence. We also began with talking about the carbon cycle. And with that, we focused on the different spheres of the hydrosphere, the geosphere, atmosphere, and the biosphere. And through those, we're looking, we're using the schoolyard to learn about what's happening within those. For example, we'll be doing mapping of the, where water goes, where it's in the schoolyard. Assets like the whole water gardens all around the schoolyard to focus on the hydrosphere. For the biosphere, we'll be measuring trees and looking at the plantings of the gardens. For the geosphere, we'll talk about the soil and the garden project and if there's composting. And the atmosphere was when we actually did the carbon cycle game to learn about how carbon is, too much carbon dioxide is getting into our atmosphere. And with that, we did discuss some solutions. So from all of that base, that baseline information for them, those are the learning sessions. Then each class will choose their own project, schoolyard project. And that will, for the three remaining sessions, we'll be mentoring them on their choice of the projects and what they want to accomplish for these projects. So a project may just be a project proposal, if it's too large a project, or it might be a project that they actually complete, having to do with the schoolyard. Then it ends with the community, or I'm sorry, the culminating event, where the community will be invited to see or where the seventh graders will showcase their projects. And then Kim will talk a little bit about the eighth grade, even though Brittany's not here, she did send us an update.
Right. So Brittany's been working with the eighth grade in a couple of different ways. One, she had a team of eighth graders who joined the Youth Climate Summit this past fall. And they, we went to the Springfield museums and we had a Western Mass Youth Climate Summit, and there was a team from the eighth grade that was there, working on climate solutions and learning about climate, having the opportunity to meet their peers, their peers from around this region of the state, and they did an amazing job. Brittany is also working with all of the eighth grade civics classes, and they're going to be using the new Climate Democracy Project video that we have through Mass Audubon and accompanying action planning resources in the late winter and doing a follow-up on climate impacts by doing a walk on school grounds in the spring. She, Brittany is also working with the PTO Sustainability Group, so she met with Leah of that group and is connecting with not only the PTO Sustainability Group, but with the eighth graders, working on ideas and hoping to collaborate. And there seems like there'll be some overlap for them to work on things like composting, recycling, school garden. And there, the PTO, it sounds like is planning an Earth Week event that the eighth graders with Brittany may be able to support, although that's still a little bit up in the air at this point. And that's the, that's the main update I have for now, except that I know for Earth Week, I believe they have asked one of our local climate champions, Ollie, she's 16 years old, you may have seen her on the news. She met center court with the Celtics, drawing a blank on the award she got, and she also, so she's been a real climate champion and is a mentor and hero really to a lot of young people who are looking to make a difference in climate. So in this way, we're trying to take all of our, our sessions, our professional development opportunities, our experiences in the schoolyard, and really bring a well-rounded project to the Mountain View School, Middle School this year, and we're really just loving every minute of it. Laura, is any, is there anything you'd like to add before we ask for questions?
I, I guess just, I can't reiterate how much fun Kim and I've actually had. It really is, it's so wonderful to co-teach, it's been wonderful to meet the teachers and to learn about, see the new schoolyard. It's, it's exciting. And it, it just today, as an example, Kim was outside setting up, but I was walking through the hallway to the sixth grade class and the sixth grade students were lining up outside the door. And when they saw me, they're like, oh my God, today's Arcadia day, they're all excited. So I think the kids are really enjoying it too.
Yeah, the students are just amazing at the Mountain View School. And I think in our first week, especially when we were doing all of our field journaling activities, you know, some of the comments we had from the students were, you know, I've never felt so relaxed, I love being outside, I feel peaceful when I'm out here. So this is really bringing enrichment to their, their lives, their academic lives, and their, their personal lives as well. And that's because we've been lucky enough to have this funding from the East Hampton Learning Foundation. So thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for us?
I just want to say this is so awesome and just so excited and so thankful that this is happening for our students. I love bringing in this real direct, you know, hands-on environmental education with our students. I know they get it in other ways, but this just sounds like this takes it to another level and I wish every single one of our students was having the opportunity for this. So let's keep looking at ways to expand this and grow this within East Hampton. Thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I also just wanted to echo how neat this is. I just, that was so much fun to hear. Thank you for the thoughtful curriculum you've put together. I have, my oldest is in fifth grade and I'm really hoping that he will get to do all of this and the youngest one too. But I really hope we can find a way to keep this going because this is just, this, this is, this is it. This is like really, really neat science learning. So thank you.
Thank you.
Lori? I want to thank you all also. It was very interesting to hear everything that's going on. It was especially exciting to hear that we had students go to the Local Youth Climate Summit. And I have a question, because you did bring up composting. I recently saw something on the news and I can't remember, I think I was like falling asleep and I was woken up to hear that there was an elementary school, I don't know if anyone else saw this, that was totally involved in composting all their students, the principal, did anyone see this? No, it was recently. I think it was in Massachusetts and there was an elementary school principal who spearheaded it. And all the students in the cafeteria knew where to bring all of their things to recycle and to compost. And I thought if that's something that we could start in East Hampton, it would be phenomenal.
Yeah, it sounds like that is something that the PTO Sustainability Committee is looking at. I know Brittany's been in contact with them and she may know a little bit more about that. And it'll be interesting to see too, what the seventh grade students choose for their projects. You know, we don't, we don't know. We'll, we'll guide them and mentor them, but it will be curious to see if that's something that they want to work on as well.
So I have a question. Right now, you're doing sixth, seventh, and eighth grade under this grant. If you were to expand, are there plans for going with the younger, younger grades perhaps next year?
Right now, we, we don't have plans for that. I am currently, I've been working with the third grades in East Hampton since 2019 as part of a Mass Cultural Council Stars Grant. So I have been working with all of the third graders as well, because this is my fourth year and we do have the grant again this year. So I'll be on the elementary side from March to May this year as well. So we have some involvement with the younger students, but not quite as much.
Well, it's still an exciting program. I like, I loved hearing all the different things and I love the idea of the project at the end. So thank you very much. It's really exciting. Ben?
Just adding, echoing, I love the idea of a student saying, I feel peaceful when I'm out here. Anything that we can do to encourage, you know, outdoor engagement and to help students realize that, you know, they are healthy and safe and it's nice to be out of the, the building itself. Let's keep going. This is fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you, yeah. Super. Anybody else?
If I could just echo everyone's thanks, thank you to Arcadia, thank you to the ELF Foundation for supporting Arcadia. It's a lot of great work and I think it's excellent that we get to do this at the new school where we can take advantage of all the great outdoors that we have and the playgrounds and the water features that we have as part of the outdoor area at the school. So it's exciting. So thank you.
And actually, I'll just add the professional developments that, that we've done, the one that was school-wide, there were about 40 teachers from every grade level that were there. So teachers themselves are also learning about bringing learning outside so that even if we can't work with every single grade, you know, with the students ourselves, the, the teachers are are also getting that information about how they can bring learning outside as, as well.
Sounds good.
Administrators did it as well.
And I think someone else will probably, and maybe Dr. Leclerc can fill us in more, I think the younger grades will get some of that inside and outside, but with the, the new STEAM teacher, which sounds really, I'm so excited for. So there, there is some of that happening at the lower levels too, which is an which sounds really, I'm so excited for. So there, there is some of that happening at the lower levels too, which is in a different way.
Absolutely.
All right. Anybody else? I thank you very much. It was great presentation and it's really exciting stuff. So maybe you'll come visit us at the end of the year and tell us how everything went. We'd love to hear about the projects, how they turned out, just in case everybody doesn't get to see them. So thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Take care.
Bye.
Okay, Dr. Leclerc, before we turn it over to Nick, do you have anything else you want to announce or tell us about?
Okay.
All right. Then Nick, we are going to turn it over to you for a little bit.
Thank you. In your school committee backup packet, you will see my business, my monthly business report, which begins by stating that at this time, forty-one point four percent of the appropriation has either been spent or is encumbered for this year. As with every other month, I'm continuing to monitor this year's budget for any areas to watch and, and/or transfers that may be needed. Nothing in the transfer department this month. I'm also monitoring spending from grants revolving accounts as well, you know, to ensure that any shortfall we may face in our local appropriation can be covered. FY24 budget process is in full swing at this time. Principals and directors are getting me the necessary information that I need to, to put together the first draft of the proposed FY24 operating budget. I'm also looking at budgeted and actual spending totals from past years to factor that information into the proposed budget as well. A tentative budget deadline, sorry, timeline has been developed. Still trying to figure out some, some dates and when various finance subcommittee meetings will be. But ultimately that will culminate with the public hearing and what tentatively scheduled for late March. It's worthy to note that the Governor's House One Budget, which is usually released in late January, will not be out until sometime in March this year due to the new administration on Beacon Hill. Consequently, Chapter 70 funding will have to be estimated, at least initially. I did see in a Masbo publication this afternoon that the, the tentative date for the release of that budget is March 2nd. You know, which certainly made me happier than like March 30th. Because it's very important, you know, to get that Chapter 70 funding estimated as early as possible. It's certainly important to the city to have that number. In December, there was an exercise that, there was a webinar that I sat in with Desi to kind of show us how to estimate what our Chapter 70 funding will be, which I will perform that exercise, of course, prior to presenting any proposed operating budget. With the extreme caveat that whatever number I give you there is not going to be the exact number that we're going to get. You know, they, in fact, it's, I, I don't know how close it'll even be because there were certain things they told us to hold constant in terms of property valuations and things like that with change from year to year. So it'll be interesting to see how accurate the prediction is, but I was happy to see that March 2nd is the tentative date. Number three, you may remember the security upgrade earmark that the district received earlier in the year for $40,000 to improve security at East Hampton High School. The grant proposal is nearly ready to be submitted, just waiting on an updated quote from a vendor. And then the proposal will be submitted to the state for approval. As soon as that happens, we can begin that the security upgrade, which, you know, it's going to have to be a phased project. The entire cost of the project is going to be well above the $40,000. That was earmarked for this year, but it's at least a start. It'll begin with new security cameras at the high school. And that $40,000 earmark has to be expended by June 30th. So there is a, you know, a window there. So as soon as I get that quote, I will, I will get that in so that work can begin. Lastly, our personnel report for December. We had six new hires throughout the month, the STEAM teacher, four substitute teachers and a part-time special ed administrative assistant. We had three separations, a groundskeeper, pre-K teacher and a special ed teacher, and no transfers. Current vacancies, you'll see the special ed teacher at, at Mountain View, the groundskeeper as well, and a para educator at Mountain View. We actually had one more resignation come in at the end of last week. So there's now two para educators at Mountain View that would be vacant. But, you know, even though there's, there's four total vacancies all in all, that we're, we're still very good staff-wise, you know, compared to many, many districts nearby. So unless anyone has any questions, that would be my report for this month.
I have a quick question. I was just wondering, do you know at all what the impact will be of the fair share amendment? Has that, is anything out about that yet?
Not yet, no. I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I haven't read the, the legislation as written. You know, I don't think we'll see the impacts of that until next year. You know, what, what I do know is that, you know, because the fair share amendment passed, now there's, there's, you know, more of a funding source for the Student Opportunity Act, which was passed a couple of years ago than there would have been had that amendment not passed. Now, the Student Opportunity Act, you know, it became law that it, you know, over the course of what was, I believe originally supposed to be seven years, they were going to roll that out. COVID delayed it a bit. But, you know, with the passage of the fair share amendment, that does provide a, you know, more of a funding source for that act than there would have been. So I, I would say that, you know, without knowing specifics, the immediate impact would be that the Student Opportunity Act will be funded as the legislature intended it to be.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Nick.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so Finance Subcommittee, Mary, was there something you want to say?
As Nick mentioned, we're working on, working on some dates and we will announce those at our next school committee and be diving into that as a committee on the, in February. Public is welcome to attend if they care to hear about the budget as we work through the details.
Yeah, yeah, quite a few people came last year, so it was really nice to see them open. Okay, Policy Subcommittee.
Hold on, I have a quick question.
Sorry, go ahead.
I missed hearing you say this, but do we also have the instructions from the city on like what we should be proposing?
For me to answer?
Yes. I, I couldn't have answered, but I didn't know if the mayor or Nick wanted to touch that one. Yes, the mayor's letter did go out. Anything you wanted to say about that, Mayor, before we go on? Nope, we're good.
Um, yeah, I mean, the letter asked all departments to put in all personnel expenses with no cuts to staff or a number of hours and honoring all CBA or individual contracts, looking at expenses, an increase of three percent of expense to start. So I'm not sure, I know Lindsay reached out to Nick to schedule kind of walking through a draft of whatever school had to take a, a look at. So that's, that's where we are and I'm, I'm happy to forward. I, I think I, I sent the letter to, to leadership and also to the chair, Cindy.
Yep, yep. So thank you. All right. Okay, so Policy Subcommittee, we have a lot of motions.
Okay, so Shannon isn't here, so I'm happy to make those motions. Okay, so number one, there's a motion to approve the second reading changes per MASC of policy AC, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation as submitted.
Somebody want a second?
Second.
Okay, Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
There is a motion to approve the second reading changes per MASC policy JB, equal educational opportunities as submitted.
Second.
Hey, Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
There is a motion to approve the second reading changes per MASC of policy JFBV, school choice as submitted.
Second.
Hey, Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
There is a motion to approve the second reading changes per MASC of policy ACR, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation as submitted.
Second.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Sorry, sorry.
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Okay, and Mayor?
Mayor, Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye, and that was me. I, I blew that one. I got you all.
There is a motion to approve the second reading of the adoption per MASC of policy JICA, student dress code.
Second.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
Now, there's a motion to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy GCBC2, substitute nurse for RN LPN. Compensation as submitted.
Second.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
Okay, three more, everybody. There's a motion to approve the second reading of the adoption per MASC policy IHAMA, parental notification relative to sex education as submitted.
Second.
Megan? Aye.
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor? Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
Now, there's a motion to approve the second reading of the adoption per MASC of policy IHAM, health education as submitted.
Second.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
And finally, there's a motion to approve the second reading of the adoption per MASC of policy IHMR, health education as submitted.
Second.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor? Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. Okay, we do have some minutes of payroll to approve, but we're on to other and I'm going to take the first other just to let everybody know that we did be at work session. We did, we received a number of, it was really exciting, a number of people who wanted to be on the search committee. So per, per on, per section or heading, we put the numbers, the names in and drew names out and we, we have a team. And that team has been contacted. The first meeting for that team will be this Thursday and that will be a training session. It will discuss confidentiality and all the, the how-tos for being on the search committee. So I'm going to announce it. Letters went out, phone calls went out and I believe Sue, if she didn't get an answer back, did email, letters and phone calls. So it depended just to make sure that, that message got through. We do have one change, so that just happened today, but let me read through what we have. So our pre-K through three teacher is Amy Gogger. Our grade four through eight teacher is Scott Kavanaugh. Our nine through 12 teacher is Sean Shan. Our para educator is Michelle Danner. We had a student, Emma Pelletier, but we just received information that Emma will, is having a scheduling conflict and will be dropping out. So that's unfortunate. We have a pre-K through three parent, Timothy St. John. A grade four through eight parent, Amy, I want to say it right, Scourin. I, my apologies if I haven't pronounced it correctly. Grade nine through 12 parent, Angelique Baker. Our community member is Amy Christiansen. Our principal is William Evans. Special ed coordinator Nancy Weld. Director of Business, Nick Bernier, and our city HR person is Emily Russo. So with our students having to step out, we, we're down to 12, still a good number. It's unfortunate that we don't have that. I don't think there's enough time to, unless something magical happens, I don't think there's enough time. And there were no other backup names, so it was only one person who came forward for student. So it wasn't even a matter of pulling a name out of the envelope. And Thursday is the crucial day. One of the crazy fear things about having a superintendent search is you have to start with your team and they have to commit to all of those meetings because it's really not fair to any candidate if everybody isn't there to, to look at everything, hear the conversations and participate fully. So we have a team, it's a team of 12. I'm very excited. And I'm excited and I have a lot of faith that they will pull together some great candidates for us. There's already been some interest in applying for the position, so that's really good. So I'm excited. I think it's, we'll, we'll get somebody. We won't have Dr. Leclerc, but we will have somebody who can do the job. I have faith. So is there anybody who has anything under other that they would like to throw in? Lori?
First, I'd like to ask, I know it's difficult because the group is meeting on Thursday, but is there any way that Mr. Evans could even contact members of the student government? Because that just seems to me that it really is a wonderful opportunity for a student to participate in something like that.
So I love that idea. The problem is we would have to have a work session to pull a name if we got more than one. And right now, we didn't have any student interest and the principal did. My understanding is those emails went out and encouraged people to, to sign up. So kind of in that quandary, we don't have time to have work session. That person has to be ready to go on Thursday, so I think we're going to have to go with the team that we have. I would love to have a student, but what I, what I love is we have parents and we have community members and we have teachers. So.
Well, thanks. All right, I do have one more other. I realized today when I was emailing with Julie Anne that no-
I was emailing with Julie Anne that nobody from the school committee has been attending equity committee. I thought that Shannon had resumed that and I thought that Marion was um, a member before. Originally, Marion, were you or no?
I was previously, but I thought Ben, you took that over this, this year. So I thought you were taking that. And so it should be you and Shannon attending since the fall.
The, I, as far as I know, there's been one meeting in the last few months and I, that I couldn't meet, make. Um, other than that, I'm. I'm happy to be part of it, yeah.
Because I get calendar notices all the time and Julianne said that no one from school committee has been involved. So Ben, are you going to do that?
Um, yeah.
Do you not get the notices? That's why I brought this up.
I did. The last meeting, I couldn't make the last meeting and that was the, as far as I know, that's the only, the, I think we've. There haven't been that many as far as I know, but maybe I'm.
I think there have been because I get calendar notices. So, could you get in touch with Julie Anne?
It's this Thursday from four to six.
Yeah, I've seen that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so maybe there's.
We can't have a quorum, that's why there can't be three of us. So that's why it's, you know, I'll reach out to Shannon uh, directly and just. Confirm if she's able to make it to that or not, so.
Okay, thank you.
And so if you just reach out to Julie Anne and make sure, like, she could probably send you ahead of time all of the different um, meeting dates. And so that would be helpful. Alright, um, anything else? No, okay, well, then we're going to go on to our action items. Okay, hit it, Megan.
Alright, I am gonna make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization. For payment dated twelve fifteen twenty twenty-two in the amount of five hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Sorry, Marion, Marion seconded.
Hey, Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Marion?
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Lori? Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzansky, aye.
I make a motion to approve the school payroll dated twelve fifteen twenty twenty-two. In the amount of six hundred thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second that.
Okay. Marion?
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Cindy Kuzansky, aye.
I make a motion to approve the school payroll dated twelve twenty-nine twenty twenty-two. In the amount of five hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second that. Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzansky, aye.
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated twelve twenty-nine twenty twenty-two. In the amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and seventy-one cents. Is that the one I just did?
No.
Okay.
Second that.
Megan Harvey, aye.
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzansky, aye.
I don't think so. I'm following. I haven't seen this one.
It was two of the same date in a row and then I got thrown off.
Yeah, okay.
Right, totally know what's going on here. Okay, I make a motion to approve the school supplemental payroll dated twelve twenty-two. Twenty twenty-two in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and nineteen cents.
Second that.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
That's negative.
Ah, that changes the motion. Thank you. Uh, shall I restate it?
Yes, please.
Yes. I make the opposite motion. Make the motion to approve the school supplemental payroll. Dated twelve twenty-two twenty twenty-two in the amount of negative one thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and nineteen cents.
Second that.
Megan, aye.
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye. Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzansky, aye. Boy, I, I really thought that was a speck on the paper because it's a little angled. I did not see it as a negative. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. I move to approve the minutes of the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two regular session meeting. With the stipulation to withhold executive session minutes until matters are resolved.
Do you need to make this motion? Is it, okay, I have a second that.
Hey, Megan?
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Lori? Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzansky, aye.
Uh, I motion to approve the minutes of the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two work session.
A second that.
Megan? Erin?
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzansky, aye. Alright, our next meeting dates are January twenty-fourth, February seventh, March fourteenth. And March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, and with the potential that it, the March twenty-eighth will be a public. Uh, hearing on the budget, hopefully. So those are our targets. Um, and then if you notice the agenda, it just says superintendent search work session meeting date. That was really just a reminder to um. Uh, announce that our search committee is starting this Thursday. So, I've already done that and uh, thank you to everybody who signed up. And it, to everybody who showed interest in doing this. So that was really good. Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Um, actually, yes, I'll make that, but right before there was another other, I just wanted to say that Julianne did arrange. For a small group of us to visit Amherst dual language program and we're doing that next week. So, I'll, I'll give you an update on that. And now I make a motion to say buenas noches.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, Megan?
Megan Harvey, good night.
Aaron Goldstein, good night.
Lori?
Buenas noches.
Mayor?
LaChapelle, good night.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, good night.
And Cindy Kuzansky, good night. Thank you to everybody. Be well.